I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Public Finance Authority Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Mora is absent. Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is here. Mayor Protem Zamora?
Here.
And Mayor Rounds?
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make a public comment, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers today, mayor.
Public comments are now closed. I'd like to call upon the deputy city attorney to read the closed session item.
Yes, we'll be commuting into closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.92 and 549- 54956.9e1. Anticipated litigation, one matter.
Thank you. We'll now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after closed session discussion to hear report from the deputy city attorney and to continue with the rest of the meeting. I'd like to call upon the deputy city attorney to read the closed session item.
I apologize for us getting started a little late. Closed sessions went a little bit longer than we anticipated. At this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Deputy City Attorney, is there any closed session items to report?
The City Council met into closed session pursuant to Government Code 54956.92 and 54956.9E1. Direction was given, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. We will now continue with the rest of the meeting. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Rodriguez to lead in today's invocation. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I'd like to call upon Mayor Protem Zamora to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My favorite color is blue. School I graduated. I like you, God.
Who's your favorite teacher?
God.
I'd like to introduce the following representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. First, we have Lena Araza from CBM Real Estate and Home Loans. Karen Lomas, Principal Financial. And our one and only Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce CEO Kathy Fink. Next presentation is proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Donate Life Month. I'd like to call upon Ruth Covington to accept the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Rounds and honorable City Council members. My name is Ruth Covington and I've been a resident of Santa Fe Springs since 1970. I met my husband Dale while we were both working as Recreation Leaders in 1980, and in 1983, we held our wedding reception at the Town Center Hall. We raised our daughter Catherine here and sent her to the local public schools. I wholeheartedly agree with the city motto, Santa Fe Springs is a great place to live, work, and play. Unfortunately, Dale suffered a heart attack while he was building his 26th Haunted House for the city's annual Halloween carnival. Dale loved his job by scaring and serving his community. I remember him wanting to leave his hospital room to gather more building supplies for the haunted maze because he could see the Home Depot from across the hospital. A few days later, he passed away, and the nurses reminded me that he was a registered donor. It gives me great comfort to know that his tissue donations were able to help approximately 75 people lead more productive lives. I'm here tonight as a One Legacy Ambassador, and I want to inform you that One Legacy is the organ recovery organization for the greater Los Angeles area. They are responsible for facilitating the process of deceased organ, eye, and tissue donations. I attended their monthly grief support group, and as I worked toward healing after losing Dale, I am eternally grateful to the One Legacy organization, and I'm here tonight to accept this beautiful proclamation on their behalf. I want to remind the audience to make an informed choice about becoming a donor because donors give the ultimate gift with compassion and empathy for all humanity. Thank you for the opportunity to address the community and encourage everyone to become a donor.
Ruth, can you come up and accept this proclamation, please? I know this isn't the first time you've been here. It's always great to see you and your husband. You know, we all love Dale Cuff. A great gentleman, quite a character, and so beloved. He's always still in our heart each and every year, and his name comes up continuously. That's the impression that he set with the people in Santa Fe Springs, and I know that you loved him dearly and still do, but just thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Ruth, it's an honor seeing you here. I mean, I worked for Cuff. He was my boss, and the reason why the Halloween event is so big is because of him. And I know at any point in time, if he wanted to have it decorated, you'd have every Park and Rec person there doing it because of him. And the fact that you are still keeping his name alive, and it's awesome. It's kind of surreal that. One of our items today is a rose parade, and I remember, and it was so cool seeing it when you were on the rose parade, and you had Dale on there because of One Legacy, and what you're doing in keeping his memory alive. And Dale is one person, I can say that his memory is still alive every day, especially in the city, and he'll always be part of Park and Rec here. Once a Park and Rec leader, you're always a Park and Rec leader, and he's one of those. So, thank you for doing what you're doing in honor of Cuff. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, I know you've been doing this for a long time. And so, you know, losing a spouse, it never goes away. You always remember. But like, he was my boss, too. He was the coolest of the bosses. You know, summertime with his carnation feast that he had. And it was just like, you know, he was always the go-to guy. And you could talk to him about work issues, also personal issues. He was just like, you know, there for the entire staff. But I know that his legacy is going to continue to live on. I know that we've transitioned from haunted house to now the haunted or the Halloween carnival. But, you know, we still have Covington's corner, and the younger rec leaders will say, well, Covington, who's that? And then the other old ones that have been there, well, let me tell you who he was. So he's going to live on forever. But especially thank you for, you know, what you're doing. I'm a donor, all my kids are donors, and, you know, because we got to just continue giving life, just like he did. So thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ruth. Much appreciated. Always good to see you. Mr. Bobadilla, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You'll have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker. I'd like to call upon Chandler Weber. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Chandler Weber. I am a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration. The purpose for me being here tonight is we're finding that as we're deployed here in Los Angeles, everyone kind of understands and recognizes who FEMA is, but they don't really understand our role. So we're making it a mission to visit all 88 cities within Los Angeles County and kind of explain what assistance we can offer to survivors. So to put it briefly, we have a normal SBA office, which is located in Los Angeles. You're probably familiar with does 504, 7A loans, things like that. My office is called the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, and that means we go from disaster to disaster to disaster, unfortunately. A lot of hotel rooms. In that, though, we are deployed when there's, you know, whether it's a natural disaster or man-made disaster, and we offer primarily assistance to homeowners and renters. So even though the name Small Business Administration, I can tell you that we just passed the $2 billion mark here in Los Angeles County. Of that, about 1.85 has gone to the individuals, so homeowners and renters. And what that looks like is we offer low-interest loans for individuals. That's going to be at a 2.563%. Can go all the way out to 30 years. And in that, the first year, there's no payment, and there's no interest that accrues. So what a lot of people will do is they start with us while they may wait on insurance or grants, things like that to kick in. And you could turn around and pay it back tomorrow, no, you know, no prepayment penalty, and it's a way to get you rebuilding faster. For the business side, that looks like two things. We offer physical damage loans that can go up to $2 million for physical damage. And then for probably a little more pertinent to your constituents, we offer economic injury or idle loans. Those are also up to $2 million, and that deadline goes all the way until October 8th. And the reason for that extension on that is a lot of times, business plans are not written, obviously, with natural disasters in mind. So if you know of any businesses that are struggling to stay afloat as we move into the summer months, please keep us in mind that we are resources available. We'll be here for the long term. And it's something that, again, a business can take a loan with us, get back on their feet, and pay it off tomorrow. Again, no prepayments, but it's something, working capital, it keeps a business afloat. If, you know, tourism is lower, things like that, as we enter the summer months. Switching back really fast, just so you have this information. If there is another natural disaster moving forward, for homeowners and renters, what we offer is up to $500,000 for physical damage. So think anything from shingles being damaged in the wind to a complete structural loss from the fires themselves or floods, things of that nature. And an additional $100,000 for personal property. That can be your vehicle, to the clothes on your back, all the daily necessities to live life. Outside of that, I left some information for you, but if you have any questions, like I said, we're going to be here for the long term. And hopefully, I've left you with a little bit of information that, again, heaven forbid, if there is another disaster moving forward, you know to think of us as well as FEMA. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any way, oh, Mr. Mayor, is there any way that we can get Kwong, you know, to get connected, and of course, our chamber?
Yeah.
I will send emails. How's that?
Perfectly fine. If not, our planning director.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers?
No other speakers, Mayor.
This time, I'll close our public comments. I want to just go back to the introducing the representative chamber, Lena Ariza. Alisa. Alisa. CBM Real Estate and Home Loans. You walked in afterwards. Thank you.
An AB specialist.
There you go. Mr. Bobadilla, do we have any staff communications?
No communications tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public hearing, item number three, approval and authorization of the sale of bonds for Measure SFS and related actions. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Really excited to bring this to the council as a public hearing. As you all may know, last November, the residents of Santa Fe Springs approved a parcel tax measure that allows us to repave all our commercial roads and roads throughout our city. And this is the first step towards that, as we promised, transparency and making sure that we can ensure that every dollar that gets collected gets spent on our roads. This is the first step towards that. So before you is a bond proposal that will allow us to purchase approximately $30 million worth of bonds that would be paid for completely with the parcel tax that gets collected, and we can start initiating those dollars immediately on road reconstruction. With us tonight is Julio Morales, who will give us a little bit more insight on the process and what to expect and what's before the council tonight. And Julio's our consultant with Cosmat. So Julio, take it away.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to go over just a quick summary, and make this quick as possible, about the parcel tax bond. As you said, you had a 77% approval. This is quick for the audience at home. There we go. We're here today, and I should start, I believe, last session you had done on the consent item, it did a minor administrative adjustment. You had changed the successor agency for the housing authority, and it stated that the meetings would match with the regular meeting dates. We had done that in anticipation of today's meeting, which we're going to go and ask for the approval and the sale of the bond issue. You're going to ask both the city and the joint powers authority that's actually going to issue the bonds. And actually, Danny Kim can answer any legal questions. So I'm not going to play attorney on TV today. He's here to help you answer any questions. But in general, when you do a bond issue, you approve the general bond legal documents. Most importantly, you're approving the preliminary official statement as a city council. So that is a document known as the POS or red herring in the corporate world. It is a summary of the key terms of the transaction and the city's financial condition and the key provisions to repay the bonds. That is what investors rely on to make their investment decision. You approve the financing team members, authorization to sell the 2025 parcel tax bonds, which will be sold by negotiated sale. In other words, you've selected the underwriter, which is Capera Capital Markets. We expect to sell them on April 10th. So as is required by state statute, we have provided a good faith estimate. This really gives you a summary of the basic transaction. It is not the final one. This is important. Today, you can give authorization for the financing team to go and sell the bonds, but that good faith estimate gives you a pretty near estimate of where you're going to be. So we anticipate, one, an interest rate about 4.34%. That, of course, will depend on the actual pricing at the day of pricing. Secondly, we take a look at the finance charges, which are $295,000 or so in cost of issuance. And then you're paying the underwriter about $6.50 per bond. That is the underwriting fee. Those are within market, typical, especially for inaugural credit as such. We're requesting $30 million. The way we sized it is with an additional $2 million contingency, based on the feedback from Mr. Enriquez right there. And then you also, one of the things we added was a $2.5 million cash funded reserve. Essentially, you increase the size of the issue, but you use that to pay off the bonds in the final year, which will be 2050. So it really should not have a net financial impact. As a general rule of thumb, and the fourth point, is that your total payments typically are twice that of the amount that you borrow. So you're going to make a total of $58 million of the payments. So bond financing is not the most inexpensive form, but it is one that allows you to accelerate payments. And if you recall the process that we went through, I'm going to skip through a couple of points real quickly. We had gone through, oh, here's the list of the projects. James wanted to accelerate, am I going back this way? My apologies. Wanted to accelerate the payments, so we did not incur additional costs. So as some costs go forward, the increase, if you have deferred maintenance, would go up by 45%. So we're trying to bond to jumpstart this process.
And not only that, Julio, we're also trying to avoid inflation. So as cost of construction goes up at a rate of maybe 5% to 7%, we do the work today, not five or 10 years from now. As instead of collecting $7, $8 million every year and then spending it the following year, we can accelerate that by 30 million now. Yes, we're paying a little bit more on cost of carry, but we're able to do more because of the value of today's dollar versus.
You're locking in a rate today, you're able to do the project today, and we still will be doing as much as we can on what we call a pay-go basis, cash. But we want to accelerate these payments. Citizens supported this by 77% margin, the business committee supported it, and we want to certainly get sticks in the ground or start moving forward. So that's the proposed list of projects. That may change depending on the number of errors, but if you're asking what we may do, that's the preliminary list. And of course, when you get authorization, you get a general authorization to do various improvements, but it may change. So we're anticipating to do $30 million with a $2 million contingency, and some of these projects may move forward and backward in unforeseen conditions. So you have flexibility. That is not a set list.
And then Julio, as part of Measure SFS, we did create an oversight committee, which is the next slide. And we met with the oversight committee last week or two weeks ago, and we shared with them the information. So they're up to speed of what we're doing, where we're going. As we promised, we will continue to keep them updated of the project list. They've seen the project list, and we had an opportunity to ask questions and ensure that the tax dollars are being spent appropriately.
And I apologize for moving around. It's a little bit of a dynamic process. This is the financing team. As I said, the underwriter will be Cabrera. Best Puss and Krieger is a bond and disclosure counsel, and we are the municipal advisor for the transaction. Learning how to use this. There's the project costs. There's approximately $6 million that are projected in revenue. So this debt will be about $2.5 million. You'll have more than enough money to pay for some of these on pay-go, which we will do. So you're not bonding out the full amount today. It's only like a third of it and still have more in the future, and we'll look to optimize that. I think it's important to kind of talk about one thing. We sent a group up to San Francisco to get a bond rating. You've not gotten a bond rating in a long time. We just got that yesterday. It was an A1 rating, and we will get bond insurance from that. I will quickly go over the summary of the bond rating here. I think it's important to note that it is not a full rating of the city's financial credit. It is just the parcel tax. And unfortunately, that's a little bit of a limitation because it doesn't represent the entire city, just the tax and just the bond issue. It is our expectation that we will go back in the summer after the approval of the bonds to get a full credit rating for the city, so you understand your position. In fact, it was a remarkable strength, but one of the downsides of this particular bond issue is it was only limited to the industrial and commercial properties. So when we go back, we anticipate an even stronger rating when we go back. So just important to note, A1 is going to get you, it's a good, strong investment grade rating. We're going to qualify for bond insurance, and we hope that you're going to get a very good rate. But I want to go over a couple of things because they talked about the coverage. That's one thing. Strong support from the residents and businesses. Once again, the credit challenge was the low number of parcels, and there's not much we can do about this. They also talked about factors that could lead to an upgrade, and frankly, we're kind of, we're locked in this position. If you say you hire resident income and lower unemployment, there's very little that we can do about that. Increase in the number of parcels, we all know, that's pretty much impossible, right? So I think we're getting the best that we can based on the conditions that we have for this individual bond issue. But once again, we're going to come back and obtain what we call an underlying credit for the city, and we'll see the financial strength that I believe you're in. Your reserves are remarkable, your operating performance is certainly fantastic. So that's the summary of what Moody says. It's good enough to get us a good, strong rating and we qualify for insurance. So having said that, we are going after this approval in two days to print the official statement, upon everything that's okay, Danny's approval. We will sell the bonds the following week, April 10th, and then close on the 14th. We will report the interest rate, if you'd like, to you. We will be somewhere in the low 4%, but we're not certain. I can only tell you that what we've experienced the past couple of years, it's been exogenous events that actually impact the market more than anything else. What that means is a war in some other country that's completely unexpected, that we have out of our control. The federal market, the Federal Reserve, Federal Market Open Market Committee is not going to raise our interest rates, so we think it's a pretty good time. Our important thing is to issue bonds before April 15th because the market gets a little squirrely, which is a finance term, right around tax day. So I think the timing works out great. You got a strong rating, and we're going to come back after the budget process and report with an underlying rating sometime in July, I hope. Any questions?
I have more of a statement. Thank you, because, I mean, bonding is something that we, you know, we've been trying to look at for some time, and I know that we missed the opportunity years back to bond on certain things that we have. So it's good to hear of our rating, and I'm glad that, what's the highest rating that we could get as a city-wise? Is it, what is it, double A, triple A?
You can get it, it starts at triple A, double A. I hope that if you're one of the top two, triple A, double A, you're what you'd call a strong investment grade, and we hope that when we come back, we'll be somewhere in that category.
If you don't mind, can you give people a little feedback of Cabrera Capital, like, you know, just the fact of what their bonding is? I think it's over, I don't know, if it's like 40 billion or 50, like overall.
Or their ability to underwrite bonds?
Yeah, just so they, just so the residents understand with all full transparency, like, that we're not just choosing somebody who is not a professional at this. We are choosing somebody that, you know, where a lot of other entities are trusting them with their bonding.
They are a well-established firm in the municipal business, and it's important to note that they focus primarily on that. That's where they got their start.
They're based in Chicago?
Yeah, they are based in Chicago. I think it's Martin Cabrera who founded it. They are on the state of California, city of Los Angeles, kind of Los Angeles, underwriting pools. I've done a couple of transactions with them specifically. So we know, like any other firm, they have a strong reputation and feel confident that they have the ability to sell these bonds. But I should say probably the most important thing is your credit rating is what's really going to be able to sell the bonds. That's what the investors look at. Underwriters will be able to sell it in their ability and the distribution, but the credit rating is what's really critical for the investors to take a look at.
Thank you.
Any questions?
None. Appreciate your work.
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the city public hearing now. Is there a discussion or a motion for the approval of item number three? I'll move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Regular business, item number four, naming of the Aquatic Center, the Santa Fe Springs Aquatic Center. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Gus Hernandez, our Parks and Rec Director, to take us through this. And I'm really excited again about this item. We've done quite a bit of work at the Aquatic Center, and there's been a lot of discussion of, you know, what's it going to look like in the future and what's it going to be called? And Gus wants to present to the council, staff's recommendation of what we believe it should be called.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. We'll move forward with the next phase of improvements at the Aquatic Center. Staff is asking council's consideration to formally name the Aquatic Center. There has been prior conversations by City Council about naming the facility after former lifeguard and fallen hero Paul T. Nakamura. And with recent, with the recent adoption of the city's naming ordinance, we now have a formal process in place. One requirement that we did have from the grant that we received from the state of California is that the word regional has to be in the name. And that's, again, for the second phase of improvements that we're making at that facility. And so approving the name at this time will allow us to incorporate the name into the final design and all the elements and prepare for a commemorative unveiling upon the completion of the project. So at this time, that concludes my report, and I can, I'd like to have a further discussion there.
Yeah, so what you're saying, we can name it the Paul T. Nakamura Regional Aquatic Center?
That would be staff's recommendation, yes.
The Nakamura's approve of it, though.
Of course they do. So also, just to add, if we can do some kind of, like, some kind of memorial where it has his pictures, and maybe if we can find some old lifeguard pictures and maybe some of his pictures that family can share that, you know, in his service, you know. in his service, you know, in his uniform, just so people are aware of why we're naming it that, you know, so they realize it is a resident, you know, that, you know, it is a fallen hero, and, you know, what price he paid for us, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
If I remember right, yeah, did we have that?
There was a little.
There was a little, but yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, back in June 19th, 2003, when this happened, within days, you know, we put up a, a memorial at the Aquatic Center. So on one side, instead of being just like kind of storage, there's almost like a, I think it's still there, but it was like a tribute to, to Paul. I think 20, let's see, 19, the US Army had the building, there's a regional training center that was named after him. And I think that was, you spoke.
That was my, that was my year that year.
And so they inaugurated the building. It's the Paul T Nakamura Sergeant, Sergeant Paul T Nakamura Training Center. And this is, was recognized by the US Army. So they did put a bronze, you know, plaque there. But if, I've got stuff that I could give you exactly why, you know, he is the person that he was. And there's a, I mean, I could go on and on right now, but we only have a couple hours. But, but yeah, to, you know, to really, you know, bring that to life. Because, you know, people do need to know who he was. You know, our federal government knew who he was. Most of us here in the city knew who he was. But this is going to, you know, be there for, forever. And I know that if we put a Paul T Nakamura Memorial Regional Aquatic Center, too many words. But, you know, that's what it is. It's in his memory, his honor, because, I mean, he's, yeah, he was our hero. And so, yeah, we'll put something together for that.
Also, I want, I wanted to say too, I totally agree, 100 percent, that we should name, name it under Paul T Nakamura. The muse, it's sort of like a museum to show pictures of, yeah, showcase. And I don't, maybe it doesn't even need to be in just one place. It could be in different areas of our Aquatic Center, showing he was a lifeguard there, he served, he, he gave his life to this country. And I just think it should be in more than one place, you know. So if you're in, you know, the, the reception area, if you're going into the hall, maybe we should think about that. I think it would be a great idea. There's nothing more that, that's so grateful as to these loving people that gave so much, and Paul gave so much to this city. So I, I think it would be great.
Absolutely. We'll work with Public Works and the design consultant to incorporate those elements.
That'd be cool, like get pictures of him, like, as a lifeguard, like, in different parts of the, yeah.
And even if you, even if you want to even like memorialize one of the chairs, a lifeguard chairs that's out there, and you know, you could wrap it so if it, something goes wrong with it, you can rewrap it with something that just so shows like, you know, his image. I mean, and somewhere else, if we want to add, you know, Sergeant, you know, I mean, if we, you know, if we don't say Paul T Nakamura, we say Sergeant Nakamura Memorial, you know, or Regional Aquatic Center, just figuring out something that, of course, that just specifies what, you know, what he is, you know, and what he was to, to our community.
I think it would inspire so many people, young, old, everybody in our community would be inspired by this, this muse. I keep wanting to say museum because I think that we should add more than one throughout the Aquatic Center.
Absolutely. Yeah, certainly. Thank you all for your feedback. At this point, we, we are looking for a first and a second and, and a vote as well.
Do we want to, like, motion that we need to say Paul Nakamura?
Yeah.
Do you want it to say Sergeant Paul T Nakamura Regional?
I would say Sergeant.
Well, I think we got the basic concept down for now. But one thing I'd like to add, I know we will ultimately make the final decision, but I want to make sure that any renderings we have, we can get some renderings of what we want it to look like. And if we can get the family involved in it, just to kind of not give a nod that they approve of it, and then we can make the final decision.
Yes.
So we will work with the Nakamuras. We'll work on some concepts. We'll bring it back to council for final.
Yes.
And then you guys can take the action then.
And only his name.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. We got direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we vote, or?
No.
No, no.
Item number five, contract with Phoenix Decorating for participation in the Pasadena Tournament of Roses. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Maricela Valdés to present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm honored to present an exciting opportunity for the city of Santa Fe Springs to participate in the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade in 2026, '27, and '28, and to request approval to contract with Phoenix Decorating Company to design, to produce, and to operate the rose parade floats for the next three years. This is an excellent opportunity to celebrate our city's history and community, to actively engage our youth in the arts, and to bring national and international recognition to Santa Fe Springs. So some background on the Pasadena Tournament of Roses. It's a longstanding tradition that dates back to 1890 in Pasadena, California. The event was organized by the Valley Hunt Club to showcase Southern California's winter warm weather and the beautiful flowers while the rest of the country was covered in snow. And as the event grew in popularity, the Tournament of Roses Association was formed in 1895 to oversee its organization. Then by 1902, the Rose Bowl game was introduced as part of the festivities, making it the oldest college football game in the United States. So the parade itself evolved over the years, incorporating elaborate floral floats, equestrian units, marching bands, and it drew millions of spectators annually. Today, the Rose Parade takes place every New Year's Day, except when it falls on a Sunday, then it's done the following Monday, and it features stunning floats that are covered with organic materials such as flowers, seeds, and leaves. It's known internationally as a prestigious annual New Year's event that provides significant exposure and promotional benefits to its participants, with in-person attendance in the 800,000 and more than 50 million worldwide Sorry. All right. All right. Okay. So the theme for the January 1st, the 2026 Rose Parade is the magic of teamwork, which really aligns perfectly with our city's vision of community So in conducting the research for this project, I learned that Santa Fe Springs started participating in the Rose Parade every year in the 1960s, and they were granted the grand prize in 1969. And after a 38-year absence, the city entered, entered into rose floats in 2007 to honor the 50th anniversary, and the float theme was Art Hometown, which depicted Heritage Park. And then most notably in 2008, with its celebration of life, Dia de los Muertos float, it won the extraordinary trophy for the most spectacular float. So once again, the city has a great opportunity to participate in this event through the construction and presentation of floats for 2026, '27, and 2028 Rose Parades. The city's going to be celebrating its 70th anniversary in 2027, making it this a unique opportunity to commemorate seven decades of growth, community achievements, and commitment to its residents. So for this, staff is proposing contracting with Phoenix Decorating Company. In February, Mayor Rounds, council member Mora, and city staff had an opportunity to visit Phoenix Decorating Company, and we got to see some of the floats that they designed for the 2025 Rose Parade. Phoenix is only one of three float builders that is officially approved by the Tournament of Roses Association, and they have over 40 years of experience. They've won numerous awards, and they've pioneered innovative float designs and with advanced animation technology. In fact, Phoenix is the trusted company that designs the Queen's float, which transports the, the Rose Parade court each year. Also, their location, which is in the city of Irwindale, is just off the 605 freeway, and so their proximity to Santa Fe Springs makes it for an efficient collaboration and volunteer coordination. Phoenix Decorating, their, their expertise, their award-winning history, their proximity to our city, and their commitment to innovation really make them the ideal choice for designing and producing the Santa Fe Springs floats through 2028. Phoenix also has a long history of, of producing floats for a variety of different cities, for states, for nonprofits, and for-profit organizations. And in 2025, Phoenix won nine awards. Here's some of the photos from the award-winning floats. The city of Alhambra won the Mayor's Award. Trader Joe's won the Showmanship Award, and then Shriners Children won the Queen's Award. So contracting with Phoenix Decorating Company is going to cost the city 200,000 per entry a year, though the cost of the float is small in comparison to what the Rose Floats platform is going to reflect the city's values, its heritage and progress, while uniting our residents in a shared sense of pride. If approved, Phoenix would apply on behalf of the city to the Rose Float Association for the entry into the Rose Parades for those three years. Upon acceptance by the Rose Float Association, the city and members of the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee would work with Phoenix to design the float for the 2026 parade, which is scheduled for April and May. Then Phoenix would spend the next seven months constructing the float's framework, and in December, city volunteers would be transported to Phoenix's facility to finish decorating the float by attaching dry and floral decorations. The city would coordinate the volunteer efforts needed to decorate the float the weeks, weeks leading up to the Rose Parade, including transportation to and from the float production site. Community involvement in float decoration will serve to foster civic engagement and strengthen our local pride. So one of the most exciting aspects of this project is the opportunity, obviously, for community involvement, but particularly with our youth. So the city would focus on recruiting youth volunteers from the Santa Fe Springs schools to assist with decorating the float. So this hands-on experience would allow our students to engage in the arts while also contributing to a major public art event. So not only with the Rose Parade does it serve to strengthen the city's identity and to bolster community pride, but it's also a way to highlight our history. So a dedicated 70th anniversary themed in the 2027 Rose Parade, it would serve to a significant milestone celebration, reinforcing our city's legacy while promoting its future vision. Also, the Olympics is coming to LA in, in 2028 and securing a spot in the 2028 Rose Parade, and the city's participation in that parade would maximize our visibility on a global stage, further strengthening Santa Fe Springs' presence in an internationally broadcast event. So by participating in three consecutive years, Santa Fe Springs can maximize media exposure. We can strengthen our city's ongoing branding efforts and create long-term recognition. Furthermore, the increased visibility will provide Santa Fe Springs an opportunity to position itself as a destination for cultural events, economic investments, and community-driven So staff is recommending that city council take the following actions. One, to authorize a contract with Phoenix Decorating Company in the amount not to exceed 600,000 for Pasadena Tournament, Tournament of Rose Parades services for 2026, '27, and '28 in an agreement approved by the city attorney. Number two, to allocate 200,000 for fiscal years '24, '25 in the art and public places, special fund monies, activity for expenditures related to the design, production, and storage and operation of the 2026 Santa Fe Springs Rose Float Entry. Monies for the 2027 and the 2028 Rose Float Entries, those will be proposed in future corresponding budgets for approval by city council. And number three, to authorize Phoenix to apply on behalf of the city of Santa Fe Springs for entry into '26, 2026, '27, and 2028 Rose Parades. In the days following the Rose Parade, the city, we've inquired with Phoenix Decorating Company to allow us to transport our community members to and from the facility so that they could come and view the, the float in person, take photos, videos, and to memorialize the city's achievement. And funding for the Rose Floats will come from the Heritage Artwork in Public Places program. And this is fully funded through development and redevelopment fees, not from the general fund nor for city taxpayers. And then just lastly, this project was presented to the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee on March the 18th, and they voted unanimously to recommend city council's approval of this project using Heritage Art in Public Places funds. And that concludes my presentation. I, I left some commemorative pins that we found from 2008. We made those and we distributed them back to the community back in 2008. So we could do something like that as well.
Maricela, thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had an opportunity to speak to the city manager of Alhambra back in February of this year, and I was able to visit the, what they call the, the Float Fest event that they have the day, the days after the Rose Parade, where you can go see the floats kind of close up. As I was walking by, I saw the Rotary float, I saw the Lions float, and then I saw Alhambra's float. And I said, man, it had a big thing that said that they had won the Mayor's Award. So at the city managers' conference, I asked the, the city manager of Alhambra, man, this is, that's great. How does your, your city does this every year? How do you guys do it? And they said, man, it's, it's, it's been a huge sense of pride for that city. And he says, we, it's never a question. They just love it. The people who volunteer love it. And it's really given us a sense of identity when, when we're out and about, and people know us all over as, you know, the city that has a float every year in the Rose Parade. So we're hoping to do the same. I want to thank the hack committee for supporting this. I, I really truly believe this is a way, it's, there's a lot of things that benefit us from, from, from having this, but more importantly, it's a civic pride in having our community participate and being involved with something that the whole world's going to see. So we hope that the council supports this, and we can make this a tradition in Santa Fe Springs.
Does it help our bonding?
You can invite them.
It might, right?
I think this is a great idea. It has so many opportunities for our community, one being the youth getting out there and with the flowers and making, being a part of making the float and just the participation. And like Renee said, the civic pride that, that it brings to our city. So it's, it's a great opportunity for us.
You know, last time they had the, the float, I went out there with my daughter, and there are more seniors there from our senior center than it was youth. The seniors get so involved in it, and they were the ones practically doing the whole float.
They are the youth.
Great. Yeah, they are the youth.
The seniors are the youth.
Are there any other questions or comments? If none, thank you, Maricela. Then do I have an approval of item number five?
I make, I approve.
A motion?
A motion.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Next, we have the Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council Consent Calendar. We have a total of 18 consent items, numbers six through 23. Do I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar?
I'll move, six through 23.
A second, six through 23.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Council member Mora?
None tonight, Mayor.
Council member Martin?
None tonight, sir.
Council member Rodriguez?
None tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Youth Leadership, Brianna Valencia.
Thank you for that. And I have none tonight. Council comments, AB 1234, council conference reporting. Council member Mora?
This Friday is going to be another, for
This Friday is gonna be another, uh, first night with, what's it called, um, Peppermint? Yeah, I turned in my very first, uh, Friday night last, uh, month with my wife, with the Celtic, Celtic, whatever that was.
Celtic.
Celtic, okay. Well, it was fun. And, uh, it was, uh, first time ever, and, you know, those are, uh, those were a lot of fun. Uh, chuck it out. I would love to see more kids out there, but it was also a good opportunity for the kids that were there to be, uh, you know, have a, you know, win and be spotlighted at, over at Art Fest. Um, and like, uh, as I mentioned before, we did take a tour of that, uh, facility for the Rose, um, Parade. It's impressive. It's huge. And, uh, Maricela got a little pointing gift with a gigantic broccoli. I don't know if she still have that or not. So she, she went home happy with, with her veggies. Um, I also wanna thank, um, Priscilla Fernando for keeping us, you know, in line, keeping us legal with all our documents, uh, all the arrangements that you're doing, meeting reminders, everything. Because if, well, if you guys doing it, uh, probably be in jail or something. Well, maybe not that bad, but it, it could be bad. Thank you. And also, um, already happy birthday to Captain Reese. Uh, I think that's an order. I, sorry, I didn't say that. But, uh, it's tomorrow, I think. But other than that, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
We're all gonna be, we're all telling you happy birthday, Captain, so good. Um, again, yeah, Chalk It Out went, it's, it's, this year was a little different. It wasn't as busy or packed as it normally was, so, um, hopefully it was for some other reason, but except advertising. But usually it was like packed, this year wasn't, so it was still fun with what was there. Um, I never was also gonna say, um, the Chalk It Up is good. Um, on April 10th, correct me if I'm wrong, Arlene, is the, uh, vaccination at the GVNC for the seniors. I qualify now, so I can get my dogs vaccinated there. But it's gonna be a, a dog show and, and like contests and all that. That's pretty good. And also, um, Siaka has this program, which is really good, and I want it publicized as much as possible. It's called Pets for Troops. So if you're an active member or retired, remember, you can go and either get the, uh, the pet adoption is reduced by 50% and sometimes it's even free. So if you're an active member or a retired member, you can pick whatever animal you want there, and a lot of times the city will help take over it. Um, another thing, um, about this program too, it's pretty good. It's kind of interesting that most people have gotten a chicken, have gotten, um, rabbit, a pig, but the dogs, hardly anybody gets the dogs. Everybody's getting like the, those weird animals. But please know that our city is part of that, and we do have that program. Exactly, they do. At that point, and real quick, uh, regarding the chamber, um, we always announce certain people that are here. I mean, I'm a big advocate on going to chamber first, and, I mean, Lena, I mean, as I said, I went to my chamber, and you were the one, promote you enough, you know, for my ADU, I love it. And their whole process of doing all the financing was great. So again, go chamber, do them first, because they take care, take care of us. So thank you so much for that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Good evening. Uh, again, I just, I, I'm echoing on everybody else, the Chalk, Chalk It Out? Yeah, although it wasn't, uh, filled, it was really nice, uh, we, we just can't say enough about it. I think that we have our, uh, I don't wanna say, what is it, a quad, our area right there? I think that we need to utilize it more. We have a stage, we have different areas where we can put booths. I think that we, uh, we are, um, out there with all these, uh, events. Let's use, let's use our quad. Let's put some events right there. I think it would be great. We have our community garden coming up this Saturday, and, uh, I, we have a flyer right here. Uh, they're gonna have pizza and lots of fun stuff like donuts and coffee. Come on out and help us get our community garden up and running. It's a, a great morning exercise. You can walk around, you can dig your hands in the dirt. Let's get out there and do it. And Maricela, don't bring that green drink over, because, um, I'm not having it. I wanna say happy birthday to Captain Reese. But because birthdays are very special, and people say, "Oh, it's just a birthday. It's just another day." But if you don't, if you don't say happy birthday to the person, they actually get offended by it. So, and, uh, that's all I have for day, uh, today. But I, I really would like to see our quad being utilized more than it has been. So have a great evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora?
Um, Aaron, uh, happy birthday, of course. Uh, you know, that's why we always, you know, I think we passed all of the stuff that you wanted, um, because it was your birthday. So not because of any other reason for safety precautions, but thank you, sir. And, uh, you know, thank, you know, always tell the men and women who serve and protect our city that, I know from all of us, I mean, just may God always bless them. And also to our battalion chief, right? Did I get it right? Mike? No, but I'm just saying, I know you're here, so I don't wanna forget about you. I mean, also tell the men and women too, that's, you know, serve our city from our fire department, you know, thank you for their service. Uh, when it comes to Chalk It Out, um, like everybody else reported, that it was, uh, it was a great event. You know, just seeing the kids just, you know, um, go out there and, and come up with their creative minds. Uh, of course, some parents, um, you know, you see them get involved too, which they were, they're not supposed to. But, I mean, some parents can't help themselves. I mean, they want their kids to win. So other than that, um, it was just great to see everybody there. I mean, we, it was just a beautiful day too. It wasn't too hot, but it wasn't too, you know, it wasn't cold at all. So it was a, it, it was a great temperature. So I mean, we just, you know, it, it was a blessing in disguise more than anything. I know that, uh, up here, we, 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 we do a lot of work lately behind the scenes and, 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 you know, I just may, you know, just ask God that he just blesses it, you know, and the things that we do up here. Um, having our, our reserves, I mean, when people see that, you know, in the beginning, I remember, you know, wanting our reserves to go up, and, and when you look at all this stuff, I mean, even for our staff, just to understand that we have our reserves there for, you know, for a rainy day. And I know that when we had COVID, I mean, the city council was able to, to, to not only take care of our staff, but all of our staff, even our part-timers, and, and, you know, where other cities let people go, we didn't, you know? And that was just a blessing more that, you know, that the fact that we were, um, just saw the vision and knowing. And I do hope that we do get that triple A rating when it comes to our, uh, our, you know, our bond and, you know, when it comes to the city. It looks really good, and then it, it allows for other businesses to come into Santa Fe Springs and, and to know that we are welcome for business. Uh, I do have something, uh, you know, on the promenade area. I know, um, if we can get more, um, public safety, more, you know, more, uh, patrolling just inside, just, um, I know that the weather's getting better, so a lot of our kids are going to the promenade. And I have already heard for some, from some of the students that, um, they're just being, you know, by certain individuals that are sketchy individuals, I think I could say that, right? Sketchy individuals that are coming up to them and just asking them for, for money, you know, whether, and they're not asking for a dollar anymore. Asking for like $10, $20, and, you know, so it, you know, some of these kids get all scared. So we just wanna make sure whatever we can do to provide that safety and protection. But other than that, I mean, you know, may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs. I think the Women's Club has a quarter mania coming up this Saturday, Sunday, Sunday, so. And then, um, those who are gonna be going to the garden, um, you know, to pick some lovely vegetables that Maricela's always raving about. I hope our float is not vegetables, all right? Just in case. I'm just making sure. I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, hopefully there's other ideas than, you know, than, than red broccoli and cauliflower and whatever else Maricela thinks is, you know, better than carnitas. But, you know, other than that, um, thank you guys and have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I concur with everybody's comments once again tonight. Captain, happy birthday tomorrow. Um, hopefully the chief gave you the day off. If, um, if not, the mayor gives you the day off. Just tell, uh, Vee, okay? Yeah, no, with pay and a birthday cake. Um, uh, I don't know if you've noticed, our city is getting cleaned up with a lot of the issues we have with the homeless. Um, one particular that, area that really stood out was over on Florence where the old Powerine was. Uh, it had the, they had a huge encampment there. If you drive by now, it looks almost like a park with the big trees. And I wanna thank Arlene, uh, for taking the lead on that. Um, not only there, but a lot of other locations, and, uh, and staff is on top of it. She's got the staff out there looking, cleaning up, and taking care of it. So thank you very much for that, ma'am. Aquatic Center, Nakamuras. Hopefully you can sleep better at night, but, you know, that's gonna be great. And, uh, you know, and we will, we'll keep you involved in the whole process until it's, uh, till it's all finally completed and designed. Um, the float, eh, anybody here work on the 2007 or 2008 float? It was amazing experience. And I, hopefully the chamber will be there, all the departments, the employees, the residents. It's amazing. It's amazing to go up there and, uh, to work on that. And, uh, I remember, I was a little bit younger then, a lo, whole lot younger, but they had me, the older guy there, working on the top of the float. I never could figure that one out and scaffolding and stuff, but, but it's gonna be great. Looking forward to it. Um, again, Santa Fe Springs is a great place to live, work, and play, as, uh, Ruth Covington said earlier. So with that, um, thank you for everything you guys do, and I'd like to adjourn this meeting.